How's Caitlin?
I'm feeling well.
I am not feeling well.
After we talked about it. He lost his voice that night. He told me to call him and an hour later he wouldn't even speak.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah. Yeah. Yep. We see them.
My buddy, Millie, thanks. He was the only single root.
I can't say that to me. You didn't give me a chance to talk.
When it happens every day, it becomes a norm.
Yeah.
How are you?
I know. I threw a jacket on.
Thank you so much.
Now I believe until that's my decision.
That's right.
Wait, I've been measured. That's okay? Yeah, right?
So you, uh, need to travel or you're gonna do like a journal?
Sure.
Yeah, I can't go too far.
Do this thing, just video it all, just put it on Facebook. So you can follow it.
I'm not as much into the Facebook stuff. Or your followers.
And we still got one in that door.
I miss my locker.
The number you have dialed.
Hello?
Good morning.
Who do we have?
He's, sir.
Morning, Jason. How's the weather on your side of the mountain?
Actually shaping up pretty nice, sir.
Good.
Of course tomorrow will be a little different story.
Never know, could always be a cloudy haze over there.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Okay, you live?
We are.
Good morning, everyone. Ask you to please rise for opening prayer and be pleased with Jesus before we convene the Commissioners' Public Meeting. Dear gracious and loving God, we thank you for your goodness, love, and your blessings that you bestow upon us. Lift our eyes to seek you first. We thank you for your mercy and grace each day. Father, we thank you for those that protect us. Tomorrow we'll celebrate the Navy Reserve on their birthday. A hundred thousand reservists today have served in every major war the U.S. has been engaged. Formed in 1915 and respond to World War I, they comprise eighty-seven percent of the Navy during the war. We thank them on this special day for their service. Lord be thank you for their lives that have so graciously, graciously served. We also honor the Navy C.B., whose birthday is on Sunday. Originating World War II, they have been instrumental in combat operations, humanitarian efforts, and nation building. We thank them for their dedication and service. Lord bless these men and women that keep our freedoms by protection of the seas. As we conduct our meeting, may you grant us your wisdom and clarity, and may our decisions be in accordance with your will. These things we humbly ask in your name. Amen.
Let's look reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning. At this time, we'll convene the Commissioners' Public Meeting and ask for approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All fair side.
Aye.
So carry and we'll have public comment on gen items only.
No, no, what?
Okay. Then bid openings. Krista?
Morning.
Morning. The bid is for deed book repair and restoration. We had one bidder, Kofile Technologies Incorporated. The amount is fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Okay, thank you. Reports. Caitlin?
Good morning.
Morning.
Presented for your ratification, our invoice is due through March eighth, 2023, to be paid on March first in the amount of one million, two hundred, seventy-five dollars and thirty-seven cents. The breakdown is as follows, with fifty-six point seven-one percent being funded by the General Fund at five hundred, sixty-seven thousand, two hundred, sixty-one dollars and sixty-six cents. One point seven-eight percent is being funded by grants and other sources at seventeen thousand, eight hundred, twenty-four dollars and forty-seven cents. Four point five-two percent is being funded by RMS at forty-five thousand, two hundred, fifty-three dollars and eighty-three cents. And thirty-six point nine-eight percent is being funded by escrow at three hundred, sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred, thirty-five dollars and forty-one cents.
Okay, thank you.
And that, the majority of that escrow is going to our children and youth, right? That's our, our contribution or pass-through, I think.
Pass-through, yeah.
Yes.
Have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Carry in and all fair side. Aye, so carry. Thank you, Caitlin.
Thank you.
Personnel actions. Jessica. Where is Jessica?
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Director. Seeking your approval on the following personnel actions as conditional offers of employment subject to the successful completion of background checks and other employment conditions. For the I.T. Department, Nicholas Neem, software specialist, full-time replacement at twenty-three oh eight per hour, anticipated to start on March sixth. For the Coroner's Office, Cassandra Pauschnet, Deputy Coroner Investigator, full-time replacement position, hired at nineteen twenty-eight per hour and anticipated to start on March twentieth. In Judge Lynn Hart's office, Benjamin Landon, law clerk, full-time replacement, hired at sixty-seven thousand, fifty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents per year and anticipated to start on April the third. In the prison, Sam Hostrander, a CO-1 replacement position at twenty dollars per hour, anticipated to start on March sixth. In facilities, we hired Donald Webb, rehired Donald Webb as a custodial worker, full-time replacement position at thirteen, sixty-eight per hour, and he is anticipated to start on March sixth. Also, for the Coroner's Office, Kate Keesling, selected as our Chief Deputy Coroner, full-time replacement position, and she's hired at twenty-eight ninety-six per hour, anticipated to transfer on March fifth. And then also for the prison, Karen Benson, hired as an LPN, full-time replacement at thirty dollars per hour, anticipated to start on March sixth.
Okay, have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Any questions or comments? All fair side. Aye? So carry. Want to congratulate Kate, she's in the audience today, on your promotion.
Thank you.
And you've been a tremendous asset to the Coroner's Office and wish you continued success. Thank you. Jessica, could, could you, uh, do you know, O'Fan, how many open positions we still have in the county?
In the county? I don't, O'Fan.
I know the last one was in the thirties.
Yeah, we're making significant progress with Ann Shear and yes.
That's what I was gonna add.
And we continue to encourage our department heads to reach out to the schools for our internship program that we have in place. We raised the, uh, it used to be a very nominal fee of seventy-five dollars for an intern. We've increased that to six hundred dollars.
Six fifty.
Six fifty, okay. Um, so, um, look for department heads with interns, which is a good way to bring, uh, bring students here, hopefully they'll stay and wanna take part in career if we have a position open.
Absolutely.
They'd be considered. And so we want to encourage our department heads to continue to do that. We've, I know next door, we interviewed many interns when I was with APO. Several stayed in the community, got other jobs, started with PRC, started with the prison, and then either came to APO or went to Sheriff's Office, went to different departments in the county and made a career of it.
Yep, absolutely. We're looking at, um, you know, partnering with Penn College, the Career Services Department, um, for various positions, specifically accounting is one that I'm looking at, I'm working with their, their, uh, business department on, so absolutely.
Great, thank you. Yes, Bill?
Yeah, one quick question. What's the total number of employees in the county right now? Is it five sixty-eight?
Exactly, it's about five forty-five. I don't know exactly, but approximately.
That's the full-time position.
I'm not trying.
Is that all full and part-time? So full-time must only be about thirty, five thirty?
It's about five thirty. Five, it's between five thirty and five thirty-five full-time, I believe.
Yeah, about that.
Yeah, yeah.
The reason for the question is going, going by the population of the county, I'm just trying to understand the amount of workforce we have for their population, which is dropping like a rock. And I'm trying to understand how they're going to manage this and through their budgeting over the next year or so. I, I understand, it's a very complex situation.
Right.
That's one of the things that I'm curious about. So we're physically five thirty-five, correct?
Approximately five forty-five.
Five forty-five.
We can, we can get a more accurate number.
Sure, absolutely.
And we will, because honestly, I thought we had more part-timers, but now that I think about it, we've changed some of the full-timers at the landfill.
And Bill, I can tell you, when, when somebody leaves, the department head, they already take a look at whether they truly need a position.
Yep, yep.
Uh, for instance, when Jessica came in, um, she was down a position and she waited a whole year to see whether she needed it or not.
Right.
And departments are very diligent about that.
I know.
The way I look at it is, is, um, I said it last week, first of all, number one, do we need it for a strategic plan overall? What the mission's gonna be with that department and how it's gonna help the county? And what's the return on the investment? You know, how's it gonna be able to save money?
Right.
By hiring someone, for instance, what we did last week with the?
Right.
With the facility management people.
Yes.
Hiring those people's gonna be about four hundred thousand dollars.
Yep.
But it's gonna save fifteen to twenty million.
It's hard to understand this, but that, the general public to understand these numbers is very critical, but they won't understand them, because there's a lot of time and effort goes into this fact. But the only one, I have one more question, quick one, when it comes down to janitorial services, why is that such a ear note below? He's in charge of cleaning the whole facility for all these diseases that are going around, handling all her kind of, uh, unit case things, dumping the trash in this magnitude. Why would that be such a low pay scale? I'm just, I'm just curious.
We, we've looked at that, having.
We have, yeah. We recently adjusted that position. You know, we do our best to pay market value for, um, for our positions. And I think that's the market, um, that's speaking to that. But we've recently adjusted the pay grade.
Yeah, we usually brought it up.
But the reason I asked that question, being a safety coordinator, as I was for years, when you're handling certain materials.
Absolutely.
Someone could have a stomach problem or whatever, and he has to do the cleanup on that. So in part to that, uh, does he have all the necessary equipment to handle that and make, is his, is his pay grade high enough to cover if something happens to him?
It's not like he's working at the hospital we have.
It's not a hospital, but I'm just saying, someone could cut themselves.
Right.
And you got contaminated, contaminated waste. That's the reason I asked the question, that's.
Yep. Um, I, I would say, you know, I feel pretty confident that our, our custodial team has the tools and resources that they need, but you're right, it's a very, um, it's a very important position and, um, they do encounter a lot of what you're describing.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
So, um, couple things, for, for people who are, who are gonna, actually for the public or anyone who's gonna come in as a Commissioner, it's important to look at where we go over time. So, you know, one of the things when I came in is I asked H.R. to pull for me a ten-year report on new hires. How many people did we have over ten years? Because absent some major change in what we do, for example, if we add another court or another judge, right? Or if we do something substantive that necessitates it, and, and part of the question is, we're asking ourselves is what are we doing different than what we did before? Watching the number of full-time employees is critical to keeping the budget under control because the average employee is forty thousand, with benefits at sixty thousand. So even having, you know, twenty-five extra employees around adds one point six million. In any one particular year, first of all, one point six million is a huge amount of money anyway, right? But when you start to look out over the term of a Commissioner, it becomes, if, even it's one point three million a year over a term, it's, it's six or seven million dollars. We need a certain amount of money in our fund balance to avoid raising taxes, right? And so if we chew into the fund balance because we have an elevated number of full-time employees, we're gonna be forced to raise taxes, right? So, so part of the dynamic, hopefully, is that, that Commissioners keep an eye on that. And obviously, there's a downside of not having enough staff also, right? We, you, you can't run the ship so lean that you can't pivot, because it's not a speedboat, it's an ocean liner, right? And we saw the experience we had with the prison, that when you tried to take the ocean liner into rough waters, you, you know, and that wasn't because we weren't wanting to hire people, it was because we couldn't find people, right? But it was a good learning lesson for us of notting, not allowing ourselves to get so close. And, and so in all of these things, part of it is getting the public to understand that, you know, even if the market rate for a custodian is twelve dollars an hour, it costs a certain amount of money to live, and to get people to fill those positions, we have to be reasonable. We're not gonna pay them twenty-five dollars an hour, but we can't necessarily say, hey, you have to live on ten dollars. That's just my view as, as a, as an elected official that, um, and so that's sort of the balance, finding a balance between making sure that we create an environment where people wanna stay, and we also are mindful of the fact that over time, uh, you know, your money goes, your money goes out the door, so. But anyway, it's, it's good news that we are getting people, and, and it is a good place for people to work, and, and I think that we're seeing that, so.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll recess Commissioners' Public Meeting for the salary board. Leading the salary board this time.
Commissioners, seeking your approval on administrative changes to the twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-seven elected official salary schedule. We identified some calculation errors, um, and corrections are outlined in attachment key.
Thank you.
Okay, so this was an administrative error?
Yes.
In terms of what the elected salaries are gonna be going forward for these positions? And, and that's based on the three and a half, right?
Okay, can I have a motion?
I'll, I'll move to approve.
We have a truck controller in the audience.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm open.
Second, second. Can I hold fair side?
Aye.
Aye?
So, it, it just so the public understands what happened, these are the positions and what people are gonna be paid after this Board of Commissioners is, is through, because we always set the salaries for the next board and, and, uh. Correction. Not twenty twenty-three. There is an error in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two. So twenty twenty-three is changed as well. Oh, can, can we do that? It was wrong. No, no, it was wrong. We voted, oh, that's right. Okay, we had an administrative error. We voted something out, uh, we voted what is written there. Correct. Right. Right, and, and it.
That was voted on back in two thousand.
But the administrative error came from this school. They put it in the wrong. Right. They sure did.
That was voted on back in two thousand and eighteen.
Right.
Commissioners, because of the board's belief in transparency.
Right.
We're bringing this forward. That said, you voted on this in December.
Right, we voted on it.
This is not changing a prior decision, it's simply correcting the.
Right. That's a, that's a good point. So for example, the Commissioner's salary in twenty twenty-three is currently about seventy-seven thousand. It was supposed to be seventy-nine thousand, that's what the correction is there. That affected the subsequent years that we voted on for the four years after. And it's, it's the Controller, it's the Register, Recorder, Preparatory Treasurer, Coroner.
So the amounts are, are correct on the sheet.
Yeah, the amounts are correct on the sheet. And the DA rate is set by the state, the District Attorney rate is set by the state. So, okay.
Paid by the state.
Right, and, yeah. Is the DA paid by the state?
No.
No. The DA is.
We get reimbursed.
We get reimbursed, right.
That's what I mean.
Right, okay. Do we get a hundred percent, Krista, on the DA?
I don't think so.
I don't think so either. I think we get.
It's a percentage.
Yeah.
What is this question, twenty percent?
Boy, those state workers are almost up to.
I feel like it's fifteen, did I verify that?
Yeah, there was articles on that, I was curious, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, and it's on the back of the agenda if anybody wants to, to look at it.
Okay, next, Matt. Well, let's, I'm sorry. You got five point three?
We voted on that.
Yep. Yeah. Five point three is, uh, Commissioners, seeking approval on the, the, or correction, Salary Board, seeking your approval on the following Salary Board actions outlined on attachment pay. That is simply, in the Coroner's Office, request to reclassify the Chief Deputy Coroner position from a pay grade nine to a pay grade ten.
Before we vote, I also want to offer my congratulations to Ms. Keesling. I, Miss, I was waiting to do that under attachment C here, but, um, I think you bring a lot to the office and that's very exciting. I'll move, uh, salary.
Have a motion?
Yes, sorry. Thank you.
Second? On fair side.
Aye.
Aye, so carry. Okay, at this time, we'll adjourn the salary board and we're convening Commissioners' Public Meeting. We'll go to TDA actions.
All right, yes. Um, so for this, for the Coroner's Office, I'm requesting to, uh, change the TDA for the Chief Deputy Coroner position from a pay grade nine to a pay grade ten.
Yeah, motion? I'll move to approve. All fair side. Aye, so carry. Thank you, Jessica.
Moving on to action items. Commissioners, seeking your approval to appoint, uh, Marshall Welsh III to the Airport Authority until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
We welcome Marshall and thank him for stepping up to, uh, do that volunteer service on the board. Andy Thorne.
All right, seven point two, um, this is the action item to what we just did on the Salary Board, uh, seeking your approval to approve the administrative changes from the twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-seven elected official salary schedule due to the calculation errors and approve a correction to the December twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen, six P.M. public meeting agenda. That's to put the right chart into the agenda back in, at that time.
Okay. Have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
So carry.
Maya, you're up, seven, three, three, seven, five.
Yep. Good morning.
Morning.
The first item I have for you is vote to approve the sub-receivable award notification with Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency. This is for the APO grant need that I came to you a couple weeks about for the application. They've approved it. That's in the amount of hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. So we have, in that office, you had asked me before, Commissioner, um, you know, what that is supporting, um, based off the employees in that office, and there's sixteen adult probation officers in that office. So their salaries are well over, um, for those positions, over eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, so it's just putting a damper on that overall cost for us.
Okay, thank you.
The cost of sixteen APOs is, and in the entire office is?
Eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Okay.
Yeah. And we're being reimbursed a hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars.
Okay. Again, this is something we need to talk at CCAP about.
Yeah.
Supposed to be an eighty percent reimbursement, never has been, and it's dropped steadily through the years, it's down to about sixteen, seventeen percent.
Yeah, 'cause it's definitely gone down since I've been here as well.
It's been dropping like a.
So this is why it's so important to keep an eye on the number of full-time people, because if the state elected officials have an opportunity to balance their budget without them voting to raise taxes, and some of that balancing involves shifting costs to the county, it seems as though they're not reluctant to do that. And I'm not throwing them under the bus, I'm just saying collectively, the history has been that more costs get shipped to the county, to the local level. That's particularly hard for counties that, like ours, that has a median income that's fifteen percent below the state median income. That's true of all the rural areas of the state. So we wanna, we wanna talk to our, our folks about that. I know.
Go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say, I know sometimes people say, well, jeez, the state budget is growing so much, but when the state budget is, it shrinks at the expense of shifting to counties, less affluent communities are gonna suffer more, right? Because in Bucks County, Montgomery, Delaware, where the economy is growing, they can shift their tax burden on an ever-increasing number of people buying homes and building homes, like Lancaster County. So we need to be careful, I think, when we, uh, end up advocating to, uh, obviously, nobody wants to spend more money, but shrinking that state budget can really hurt rural communities.
Well, state budget's grown to forty-five billion.
I know.
We go to a CCAP conference two years ago, and two of the top five priorities is to increase funding to APO sources and increase mental health services. And neither one has been done. The one continues to drop, the other one hasn't been increased in ten years, and this is their primary goals to try to achieve, and the state, it falls on deaf ears to state, yet they continue to increase their state budget.
Well, that's where we have to get our, our folks to make sure we advocate for rural communities, because we are poor, so.
Need a motion? Yes.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Uh, the next item I have for you is vote to approve Amendment Number Three to the No Sub Grant and Agreement Award we have with the USDA Natural Resource Conservation Service. This is for the Emergency Watership Protection Grant. As I stated to you guys last week, um, via email, we had a cost overrun in this particular project as a result of just the market conditions. That, um, increase in cost is thirty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. The good news is, is that it's still a hundred percent being, um, grant-funded, so there's no cost to the county for the additional cost. It's being picked up, um, by DEP as well as NRCS.
Okay, a motion?
I'll move to approve.
All fair side.
Aye.
So carry.
And the last item I have for you is, um, vote to the, um, approve the sub-receivable agreement with Lexington County United Way. This is for our homeless assistance, um, program. It's consistent, it's been a hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars. This is for the, um, fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
Have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. All fair side. Aye.
You know, I wonder if it wouldn't be helpful, and, and this is to Cindy and to Mary Rose upstairs, to put on the agenda the, the numbers.
I do the agenda.
Oh, you do the agenda?
I do the agenda.
Oh, yes, you do, I forgot that is my tune. It might be helpful to put it on the agenda. I'll tell you why. If you're a, a citizen, or if you're a reporter, or if you're here, these numbers go out, I mean, even I, I'm used to the numbers, but if it was printed there, that that's thirty-four thousand, six sixty-six.
I can do that, but what, we were doing that before and then I, the office told me. I can do that, but what, we were doing that before and then I, the office told me to take it off, so which is why I did take it off. So if you want me to put it back, I certainly can.
I think for the purposes of educating the public and letting them understand, you know.
The only thing, sometimes like with the grants, I'll just say, sometimes it's like a straightforward thing, but then it may be different because like you'll see a total cost, then there's like a cost share percentage. Like I don't know how detailed you want me to get, because I, if we're going to be accurate, I just want it to be.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, I want to make the comment about just like what we just approved. You know, the way this great things and, and step and agencies in our county, the homelessness problem has prone in our community. I don't think people truly are aware of it.
No.
Recently, there was a report of a family that was camped in a tent next to a K bar in an empty lot, had a small child, and, and sometimes people just lose everything for reasons that they can't help. And we have to be mindful of people that try to help these people get back on their feet. The true, truly the ones that want to work, the ones that are running the hard luck. And it's a, it's a problem that you see nationwide and in some of these cities and it's growing in our community, we have to be mindful of it, we can't ignore it.
Yeah, but you know, when I first started here, the homeless assistance program was like two hundred and fifty, two, two hundred and fifty thousand, and again, that was another area that was slashed during the state budget. They looked at rural counties not having a problem. Then they started doing through HUD McKinney veto grant that you had to, you did counting. I was part of that, you would go out at night and you would count to see how many homeless people you could find so that you could get money. They stopped doing all of that and it's just more the same, I hate to say this, but a lot of that funding is going to your cities, your bigger cities, they're getting these monies and that's the same that's happening, you know, from magnitude of these grants, so I'll use one as the Department of Justice being one, our bulletproof vest program. We used to be a hundred percent funded when I came onboard, I could submit, you know, fifty five requests for our bulletproof vest program and get a hundred percent reimbursement. And now it takes more time and energy of my time to even get what we get back. We got like a hundred dollars back, I think, probably five years ago. It was insulting actually, by trying to go through all that effort.
That's crazy, it's keeping our police officer alive.
Absolutely, I totally agree. But it's more, you know, they've restructured everything, that it's based off of population size and crime code numbers and all of that, that, you know, it's going to these, you know, these cities that have the higher numbers and it's unfortunate.
So just jumping back to the issue that I had raised, right? Of putting information on the agenda. I think that, why don't you use, this is my perspective, use your discretion in terms of, you don't need to write a book, but I think that putting numbers there helps the public understand where their money goes. And one of the best ways to help people get educated about the county is to understand that it costs a certain amount of money to, to run things. You can't, you know, you can't do certain things. And, you know, the whole big bridge bundling was a great education for people on the cost to fix a bridge. And this whole levy, we've talked about how the levy project has gotten so expensive between having to use certain types of steel and everything. So I think if you can do it, I don't think my colleagues would object to that. And then, and then we're not scrambling around, especially for people who come to the meetings, you know, look at all that, must be two hundred people out in the audience here. And they're all dying to know what's going on.
For the people that are listening, that's fake news. There's not two hundred people on the audience.
No, no, but in all seriousness, it would, it would help us understand, that's like my thought. You know, even if you don't get to read it, but you, even if you don't get to come to the meeting, but you can go online and read the agenda.
You know. Watch the YouTube, which has all the details on it.
Right.
Yes.
Right, so, thank you.
Yep, that's all I have for you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Seven point six, Jared.
Can I just, I wanted to, I have the numbers for the total number of employees, I wanted to just come back and share.
Yeah.
So we have a total of five hundred and sixty four employees total. And eighty two of them are part-time and four hundred and eighty one are full-timers.
Now, that's not what's on the TDA, that's.
That's not the TDA, that's people that are employed currently.
That are employed, that we're writing checks to.
Correct.
Okay. Because actually, if you look at the TDA, and that's what we budget towards.
Correct.
But that is really helpful and thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Jess, can you find out how many is still early?
Yes, I'll text you.
Yeah, yeah, text it to me please.
Thank you, Ms. Seigre.
Morning Jerry.
Morning, Messrs. On the employment front, I can tell you that IT still has three open positions, one of which has been open for about two years now. The matter before you today is for the assessment office software that manages the property taxes and such. The annual bill on that is one hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and fifty seven dollars and sixty five cents. This is of course a twenty twenty three budgeted item.
And that's a license fee essential?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so there's a good example for the public, just for the, not the privilege, but for the right to use that software, we pay one hundred and twenty thousand a year.
Yep.
In addition to what we already paid to purchase the software.
Correct.
Yeah, and that's the situation really with a lot of this electronic data information and tools. The interesting thing about Ms. Seigre's comment is that we budget for a much higher number on the TDA, but that's why we wind up sometimes with a surplus, so, so that's, that's good, but I'll move to approve that.
I'll second.
On your side?
Aye.
So carried. Jerry, a question, the new position that was appointed today, does that leave still leaving three or two?
That still leaves us with three technical positions.
Okay, thank you.
Jason, you still on the line?
Yes, sir.
All right, seven point seven, seven point eight, you're up.
Seven point seven commissioners is vote to approve the amendment for twenty twenty three, eight salary rate increase for the Barton Le Judas contract that we have. Barton Le Judas is our engineering, our main engineering firm, not our only engineering firm, but our main engineering firm that is currently involved in our twenty-two acre capping project. They assisted with our six and ten inch forced main project that went down to Greg Township. And they are also right now helping us establish baseline for gas well and well pumping projects. So they are vital to our operation in that, we have seen good returns, excellent returns on our investment in Barton Le Judas and I am glad to recommend for their amendment, to their agreement.
Taking a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
On your side?
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
Thank you. Commissioner, seven point eight is kind of a funny one because last week I stood before you, actually right before you, and asked for your approval of the Keep PA Beautiful program that we support every year from April first, April thirtieth. And as Commissioner Metzger and I was engaging in good conversation, we walked away forgetting to have it approved. So I am now seeking your approval for the Keep PA Beautiful, and it, and I also had it wrong, it is keeppabeautiful.org is the actual website that they can get on and register for the project cleanup.
Yeah, I had to make comments about, you know, when I was leaving for lunch, going down through Basin Street and the mound of garbage alongside the road and along the belt, it was just appalling. And I don't understand why people can't wait to, the next stop at a, at a convenience store or gas station when they pump up gas and there's receptacles there to throw their trash in, why they can't do so. And they throw it out the window to make our area, it's beautiful, look like one of the cities. And so I encourage people, please keep their trash in their vehicles and dispose, dispose of it at the proper location, so. I thank you for doing this Jason, at the same time apologize for distracting you.
All right, let's move on to the next thing here, should we forget to vote now?
No, we're gonna vote.
Okay.
A motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
On your side?
Aye.
Aye. And Jason, today I saw on the news that it's National Old Stuff Day. So if people out there that want to get rid of their old stuff, I'm sure Jason will welcome it at the landfill.
Yes, we do, we, we, and just as a side note, we still see wooden cabinet TVs with eight tracks coming into our TV recycling at the landfill, so yes, there's plenty of old things still coming in.
Now Jason, just reiterate for the public, so the transfer station no longer takes televisions, right?
Yes, sir. Currently with our footprint, we don't have the ability to house a container safely for electronic recycling.
So they can, but they can still come to the landfill for free of charge and drop it off, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and that electronic includes big TVs, the old TVs, what else Jason?
Computers, keyboards, mouses, printers. The old mindset of if it had a cord of electronic is inaccurate, it's not true. Microwaves, the old microwaves are metal, they go in the scrap, same with a lot of the other stuff. The, the goal of the, the act, the Covered Device Recovery Act, was aimed at recovering the capo ray tube, the leaded glass in the old TVs. That was that and also the safe disposal of people's computers so that information wasn't being leaked out or people would leave private information on their computers when they went to recycle them. So there's also safeguards in that for downstream de-manufacturing of the electronics.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you Jason.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner, comment?
Have any?
Just want to continue to bring attention to the, the drug issue in our area, the fentanyl problems. A coroner has advised us, we're up to nine overdose deaths now in our county, just this year alone, like last year we had nineteen, and we're only into the third month of the year, we're just starting. So, again, and I want to thank Larry Stelfer's tremendous article last week talking about the fentanyl situation nationwide and I understand it was very well read, so thank you for bringing awareness to it.
Public comment?
Yes.
Good morning Commissioners, good morning public. And I'd like to say one thing here, last week we listened to a meeting, Tony, you brought up something that's close to my heart, ripped into the same thing. We talked about a construction project on a piece of road going through Wayne'sport to Jerdu Shore. I will tell you this, it's a safety quarter, correct? So a safety quarter consists of what? I'd like someone to explain that to me because I've already talked to the state, can't get an answer one way or another. To me, how about the people walking alongside the road? If you don't have a car, you can't get to the other side. I asked, two years ago, one month ago, we asked to have a walkway put across two twenty up there, get them people across to the stores over there, it's not in their budget. We build a road, we don't have the parts. They asked for an extension last year, they got another extension. We're consistent on this and the super, unfortunately, the commissioners, the problem is the commissioners have no standpoint in some of this, but I'm just bringing it to your attention because the commissioners cannot do anything other than what they're told. You can't, you can probably ask questions, but will you get a response? I doubt it. It's up to Harrisburg to make some restrictions on this stuff. But a public quarter would see, would seem to think you could go from point A to point B to cross that road safely. We've had people hit up there, a lot of stuffs aren't reported up on that road. It's an open congestion area, the road, the road they're making significant headway on it, unfortunately they're doing that, but unfortunately people have to get to the other side of the road. And without a car, you don't get there safe. And you really don't get there safe with a car, because the speed up here is sixty five, seventy mile an hour, call the state police, you call PennDOT, send you back to state police. So in reference, I get to Harrisburg, I say, what are we gonna do about this road? We need to design it. So.
They definitely designed it.
You see what I'm saying to you? But that's just some of the stuff, and, and, you know, and then that's, that's just that article right there. And I don't know what you can do, I really don't know if you have any control over anything. From what I'm gathering, through the state of Pennsylvania, it's every man for himself. That's unfortunate, it's the right, it's just the way it is. You got three states, United States you like that, possibly another forthcoming, you have no control over nothing. I wish we could do some physical control to help the general public make a better understanding and we can do things better. And I know we got, you guys got the technology, Scott, you've been around forever. Tony, you got a business, Jason Dayton. And you've got the state, you've got, you've got a business.
It's nice to be the youngest guy up there.
Rick, and you've got, Rick, you've got a business. So, so we talked about ADA last week.
Yeah.
What a kick in your ass. What a kick in your ass. Talk about the ADA. We wait, how many years, run the red flag up? Churches? They just don't want to do anything but don't get free money. Public buildings? They get free money. They'll come to the county, they'll come to the county and say, we need X, Y, Z to pay for this project. Is that not correct? Is that not correct? So why in tarnation don't anyone ever look, instead of running the red flag up, take a look at it before it happens? That's, that's my, that's my spool, I'm sticking to it. I wish the county well. I don't see it well down at the mall, I think that's a waste of money. We got other, we have other, other bridges we have to fix, we have no industry. We just got sent out the road with the largest, with the largest recycling development going down Northumberland and Downville, Danville down there, two point five billion dollars. Red Cap going on down to Northumberland down there, large manufacturer, all the major, major players don't want to come to county. But we put restaurants, micro pubs in, no specific hard paying jobs. But again, I understand that your hands are tied. That comes through the planning commission, the city fathers. We loaded, we loaded oil sock up with all our kind of restaurants, okay? And again, what we have in Wayne'sport, I was going to go shop at the Penns today in Wayne'sport, that's why my parents come to Wayne'sport to go shop in Penns and Sears. We moved them all forty-five years ago, now it's closed. We have nothing. Cape, uh, excuse me, Coles is in financial trouble, they just got a reduction on their taxes again. The people, the taxpayers don't get no reductions. We can't get reductions because we have to pay the bills, correct? Thank you so much, appreciate your time, thank you.
Bill, a couple of things.
Yes, sir.
I actually think the speed limit up there is fifty-five.
Yes.
People may go sixty-five. I understand what you're saying, I, I know that Commissioner Musser and when I was in the state legislature, we did go and attend meetings up in Linden and I, about that with PennDOT and, and expressed the concern the constituents had. The interesting thing is I was, we were driving two weeks ago to Lock Haven for an early meeting of the jointer and we're on the highway and the, the discussion that we'd had with PennDOT five or six years before is this has to be a high-speed highway.
Yep.
We can't have traffic lights, it has to be a high-speed highway.
Yep.
So we're driving there and we stop behind school buses.
Yep.
The school buses are, and of course they should be stopped, right? Because they're picking kids up, but literally the entire highway is stopped. And I thought, wow, this has gone from, you know, so, but here's the thing, all is not hopeless, there is the Watts Committee, which is the group of people, including the commissioners, who allocate and distribute funds for transportation in the county. And whoever our new elected commissioners are, they will have two seats on the Watts Board and Commissioner Metzger and I sit on it. And we can bring up at Watts, the whole question of, is there a way to do something with getting from one side of the highway to the other for constituents? That, that's number one, okay?
And the reason I'm bringing up Tony, excuse me, two things, two things you guys. You know, you, you don't have the opportunity to see older folks walk across the wagon from a trailer park, Dollar General. Some of the areas up there are six lane hot, six lanes, six lanes of traffic right now. You know, you would think, if you go to any, any geographical place throughout the state or any other state, there's always a walkway.
You know, I don't, we attended many of those meetings and I don't remember anything about walkways.
I brought that up two years and one month ago and they said, they can't do it because it's not in their budget. And I got that documentation on that.
So the problem is, it's kind of a, it's kind of a, trying to be too many different things, it's trying to be a high-speed highway, but it's also a commercial zone like the Golden Strip and, and they, they said to us they could not be, the, the Department of Transportation said that the nature of the way the road is, that people will always go beyond the speed limit. But having said that, Mark Morowski is, is, has been around a long time, Sal Vitko and all of our Scott Williams up in transportation, we can raise it with them, okay? So that's, that's the first thing. The second thing on the mall, you termed it a waste of money. I'm not sure that I would say it's a waste of money, it's our effort to try to jump. It's our effort to try to jumpstart through a public-private partnership, some development there, and at the same time, using our Act 13 money, and at the same time, sort of protecting the taxpayers' money.
See, you brought a very intelligent point there, Act 13 money. What are you gonna do when it runs out? You start a project, you can't finish it.
Well, remember, it's not a grant.
It's a loan.
It's a loan.
I know, I understand.
And our goal is to try to, no, I understand, and you have reason to be concerned. Constituents, you know, after.
Would you want to fill a housing development down there when you got a whole bunch of warehouses sitting right in front of you?
Who says the housing development?
They're guys, what he announced last week.
So mixed, mixed use.
He wants mixed use, but he's gonna put housing down there.
Yeah. Well, which warehouses, oh, you're talking about way at the.
You got there.
Well, you can be at a different end of that prop, it's 138.
133.
Huge. Yeah, 133. You could be at a different end and not even see them, but, and, and you know, there's screening that can be put up, trees can be planted, but just so, because look, okay, then the last, the last thing, the major industry. Is that, what you're really telling us is that we don't seem to be getting major industry. We have gotten a lot of manufacturers coming.
$17 an hour. When I left in 2006, I was, I was making $30 an hour. Okay? Your lawyer's employer in this whole county is, is a hot spot.
Yeah.
Put it on the table.
Bill, we have West Pharmaceutical, it's expanding, we have Digger Industrials.
$17.55 an hour.
That came from, came from Indiana.
Yeah, I know that. I'm well aware of that.
They are bringing manufacturing jobs here.
What happened to the panel firm that was going to build over there, the solar panel firm? Whatever happened to that?
There's people that have looked at the land, we have somebody interested in it right now.
You know, that's the stuff that has to be.
But we're developing it, things are happening.
That has to come out to the public and have someone say to you, any kind of meetings, I go to a ton of meetings, what are we doing? And I say, well, I think we're doing the best we can do with what we have to work with. Okay? So, you know, taking a lot of your time here. Bimbo Industry. Bimbo Industry. Where'd it go? It went down the road to Allenwood. Bimbo. What we gonna do if we lose our bakery? They don't know. It's in the floodplain. What we do if we lose that? There's another one down the tube, ShopBack. ShopBack, that itself was a problem from giddy-go one. Now we're going down to what, 60 employees? And that's not set in stone.
You raise good points. There are challenges that the, that the, all levels of government, and this is, you know, this is all partly tied with the whole issue.
It really is. And then yes, the other day I find out that Lily Field they're gonna put down there sits on, you can only plant it down three feet. I've been around when that dump was there. But you want your kids playing on? I heard it the other day, it's almost at $20 million now. Is that true or false or indifferent? We don't know. We don't know where the city's taking us. You don't have no parking for Executive Plaza. And if I may, and one more quick thing, I'll leave you go here. Could you please tell the people that we are a fifth-class county? Can you tell them that? Can you tell them why we're fifth-class? It's a college town. It's a college town. Used to be the booming area in this whole unit in Lycoming County, used to be a boomer. We had enough industry to float a battleship three times over. Can we get it back? I doubt it. People, people don't want to come because there's nothing to do. Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Do you hear a public comment this time? Yes, Tom?
Take so long. No, a lot of information, thanks. I tend to view a lot of things as, it's a spiritual problem first, for the county and for the country. So where was I gonna start? First Timothy 6:8 says, for content with food and covering, you know, that's what we need to look, be thankful for is if we have that. And I think there's a lot of discontent in the world because kids, people expect more out of life, they want more, and that's, that's natural. But I think we need to learn contentment, but, and the best way to get contentment though is through work. And it is tough when you're losing industry, but at the same time, do what we can and bring it in, and I think it's doing as best a job as you can with that. But we also are battling AI. That's gonna be a real big stopper for people being able to work. That's coming fast, and that's designed to, I don't know, I just don't, just know it's gonna come, you know, and that's gonna replace a lot of jobs. It can create jobs, but I don't think as many as it, as it's intended to replace. Hopefully, hopefully I'm wrong, you know? I think, I think energy is real important. You see nonsense about carbon dioxide being a pluto, you know, it's not, but I think with, with energy, we should really look into nuclear and see how we can bring that maybe even in the area. They've developed micro plants. I've read where the military will bring in, when they're operating a certain area, they'll be there, they can erect these things pretty quick and use that power for whatever it is they need, and then they can disassemble them. But another thing we wanted to talk about with the being a spiritual problem, written a article in the paper a few weeks, I don't forget how long ago, with hospital and the doctors willing to do transgender surgery on kids. And that's all emotional, emotion-driven, I think. Kids go through tough times, and especially in today's world, we have just a lot of pressure on kids. And, and when these doctors are promoting this stuff with kids, and they don't have to hear it in the schools now, I mean, it's, it's just all everywhere, and it gets kids, gets kids questioned. Going before puberty, during improved puberty, if someone feels that much inclined, they need to wait till they're an adult. I mean, really, you know, and then, then really seek some real counsel, but we have people fighting that counsel. And even, even so, when all these adults decide to go through that, they still have struggles with it, they regret what they've done. But to push this on the kids, the one doctor spoke about doing some top surgery on a kid, it's, that's irreversible. And they start, they start with these puberty blockers, that's, that's not known how much damage those things can do, but once they do interrupt, and I wouldn't recommend that for any kid, and then if they start after puberty, there's just continual damage, and there's been case after case of kids that decided to do this, push their parents or do it behind their parents' backs or whatever, and they regret it within the three or four years, and they're, they're just devastated. And so these kids are going through emotional turmoil, depression, or lead to suicide, but the suicide rate for the, for the operates, people that have been operated is sky-high in the depression. They don't tell you that. So in Mark 5:28, we have a woman, she has the issue of blood, and she just said to herself, if I just touch his garment, she'll be healed. And that's, I think, is what we need to do, we gotta reach out to Jesus and, and help him, let him help us heal our wounds and our struggles, and try to come together for each other and not attack people because they're going through these difficult times, or find ways of how to, how to comfort them and reach out. And it's a big task, and I, I think the commissioners, guys, do as best a job you can, you know, in your positions with what we do, with the charities and stuff, but.
Thank you, Tom.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone for the ayes? Anyone else? Online?
None online.
None online.
You know what, I, I want to just, I know we have to go somewhere, but, look, we do face challenging times ahead of us, and a lot of it is focused around this repopulation because the tax burden is spread down, right? But I think that we have to find a way as a community to try to come together, put aside all of our different political perspectives, and focus on the fact that we need to present to the public, a community where people want to come and live and stay. And it's got a beautiful outdoor environment, and we have a lot of positive things going on. And there's no question, Bill and Tom, we do have challenges ahead of us, right? But because if, if, if we can get people to come here and live here, it'll jump and start the growth we need. We, we've engaged in programs with housing, where we're trying to help with housing. We're trying to use the limited resources we have wisely by recycling them through, through loans, like with the mall. Is the mall gonna be successful? I don't think any of us has a crystal ball. I think what our feeling is, is that if we don't do anything, we know that it'll just be an untaxable piece of real estate that'll disintegrate. And that maybe if we do something in a responsible way by loaning some money, and the same thing. So, but that doesn't mean that citizens shouldn't come and critique what we do. And don't take what I'm saying as saying that people should not come and critique. You absolutely need to come and critique. You need to keep elected officials informed. Like that walkway, I'll be honest with you. I didn't think of the walkway, but as you described it, what I began to understand is we've created a road where on the one hand, we have all this commercial development like Family Dollar.
Yeah.
And the store for equipment.
Right.
And the bank.
Yeah.
And people want to get there. And, and on the other side, you've got a restaurant and Sheets and everything, and the state's basically put this incredibly dangerous situation in between. It's almost as though, don't zone it commercial. Don't zone it commercial, don't create things that are gonna make people want to go from one side to the other. I think the state has an obligation to help us solve that problem. And that, that, appreciate you bringing that. And Tom, the same thing with your, your thoughts, you know? I mean, we have to think about it, but we have to find a way to do it, and both of you have been very respectful, I'm not criti, I'm not saying it for that, I'm just saying that we need to get people here and we need to get them to know what's great about the county. And I think we will, right? I think we will. We need to do a better census. That's our problem. The way we come up with the numbers for the census is ridiculous. I followed them around this last time, and it's like, especially when you have two colleges, and, and they're, and they rely upon them as part, as part of our numbers, and yet they can't find them, so they don't mark them down. They, they're doing it over the summer when they're not here. You know, it's crazy.
We've completed our agenda, and the meeting will be adjourned. We'll meet next March, next Thursday, March 9, 10 a.m. Thank you.
You gonna brief them?
Yeah.
He needs to sign it. Thank you.
Yes.
Well, there's a couple signatures that are for us.
The chairman gets to sign everything. It's the most.
Where are we gonna have them?
Upstairs or down here?
Upstairs.
Okay. But I think, well. Especially if I die. It'll be the smartest.
God, don't say that.
You're, you're timing it?
See you later.
Yes, sir.